All right, we have a interview here with a couple of new school board members. Andrea Heights and Will Jones are here today and Angela Lima had a family emergency, so she wasn't able to make it. We are praying for her. And but so we're gonna go ahead and get a few questions answered. I know a lot of parents had a lot of questions. We can't cover them all. You might even have to do this again before you guys are sworn in just to kind of catch up with there's I got like forty or fifty questions like. Yeah, people want to know, you know, and yeah, for one reason or the other. Our other local media people don't want to let the people know or aren't interested in. I don't know. That's kind of weird. But whatever. So I'm gonna start off with a couple of questions. These are curveball questions right off the bat. Okay. The first question for Andrea, this is extremely important for me to understand like kind of where you're coming from.
Sure.
Do you put pineapple on your pizza?
Is it? Do I put pineapple on my pizza? Do I like pineapple on my pizza?
You could answer both of those.
Yes, and yes, and yes.
Okay, all right, we're we're good. We're good for now. Okay.
Have you ever had sauerkraut on your pizza?
No, I have not, but.
It's there's a place in Iowa that does it, and it's actually remarkably good.
I might I might try it. Next time we do this, I'll bring sauerkraut pizza to the interview as a snack. All right, and then for Will, I have a question. I'm glad you wore your Raiders hat because I was gonna like bring that up. All right, here's my question to you. If the Raiders. Would you rather? Have the Raiders go undefeated in the season, go all the way to the Super Bowl and lose fifty to nothing? Or? Squeak in on a wild card, get all the way to the Super Bowl and then lose fifty to nothing?
Geez, huh? That's a good question. I'd rather say I'd rather do the the wild card than to be undefeated and make it.
That's what I like to hear right there.
There you go.
Yeah, get it in and go all the way. And yeah, awesome. Now. Do you feel judged as a Raiders fan living in our community?
You know, I don't. I mean, it's a lot easier being a Raiders fan in Colorado than being a Bronco fan in in Las Vegas.
Totally understand. Well, I want to go into the new black hole and. Wearing my Broncos stuff and getting knocked out, so.
You know, it's, you know, I I take that back, Brandon. I mean, I mean, it's a lot easier and then in Vegas than it was in, you know, in in Oakland. Right, you know, so, yeah, I take that back. I mean, we are closer being a Bronco fan because there are a lot of Bronco fans that have tickets for the Raiders game. So, you know, I think it's a lot easier in Vegas than it would be in Oakland.
Got it.
So a lot of people from our area love to go to Vegas, so I think it's almost a weird kind of tie where.
Right.
People are familiar with the city and, you know, would like to go there. So, yeah.
Exactly.
So, question number one of the serious questions. What is the first thing on your agenda? And then I'll have you both answer the question just back to back.
Sure.
Go ahead, Andrea.
Sure, so. This is so there's kind of two sides to this question. So I know where parents are coming from is kind of like, what are some of the first things you're gonna do? One of the first things on our agenda is we really have to kind of learn about the different departments of the district, which is something that that they will do with us. Different department heads are gonna come and meet with us board members, and we get to ask them lots and lots of questions. So what I want to do is make sure that I have some very pointed, clear questions about the different departments in District Fifty-One, because I can't start getting in and doing anything unless I have a very clear idea and understanding of what's happening with those departments. I also want to talk to people who are not the department heads, because I I kind of want to get a holistic approach or view of of people that work in those departments and people outside those departments and how they view that, which we did get some of that when we campaigned, especially when it came to like special ed.
Yeah.
So that's kind of one of the very first things we need to do is either call a listening tour or something of that sort, where we have got to get a good handle on kind of the inner workings of what's going on, because we don't want to go in and just make super rash decisions. And we also know that we need to get in and start doing some work. The other things I want to start looking at is how to really streamline some of the different processes. We need to go over all the policies and procedures that the board looks at and just make sure that we're we're right on track with what we we need to do. We also will be assigned to some different committees, so I want to look at that as well, because there's gonna be different committees. Us board members are gonna be like, I think liaisons too. And so what I what I want to do is make sure that we we create a good team between the board members and the administration staff. And so like like I've said through the whole campaign is it's the duty of the board to make sure that we're setting very clear expectations for the superintendent, and I would like to see what the previous board has or has not done, and then we need to assess that. So those are kind of some of my first initial look at what we need to do.
Got it. And Will?
I agree with Angela, I'm sorry, with Andrea as well. We did. We definitely need to sit down with, you know, the the old board and look at these things and and look at, you know, what worked, what didn't work, figure out why it didn't work. We need to, you know, look at the different aspects of everything, you know, like the different committees and the different head department heads, as she said, and talk to those, talk to those folks and figure out a game plan, figure out what we can do to change these things if they can be changed, or if we need to scrap it, come up with a whole new idea. We also need to, you know, make ourselves president in the schools and let everybody know, hey, this is your school board. We're here for you. We're your parents, you know, we're listening to you. We want to talk to you and we make ourselves more visible. I know we got an email this morning that they're gonna keep the coffee socials the same, but we need to let people know we're here. We're here to listen to you. And and not everything's gonna change in a night or day or year, but they need to understand that, you know, we're gonna make small strides to change things. And, you know, with us being here for the next four years at least, we are definitely going to, you know, do as we say we're gonna do.
Right. You're kind of you're kind of turning a big ship, it seems like, and you can't just like. You know, right, that kind of stuff. I think, you know, everybody's also looking for stability too, like as we go, just not just, yeah, crazy changes too fast, but. So another question, this one's for Will. You just kind of brought this up, but you you plan on spending time in the schools and then kind of, you know, what's your thoughts on that? Like, what's your process of? You know, getting to the schools and meeting with principals, teachers, what what are you looking to do?
Actually, you know, you just you just said it. I mean, I'm looking just to walk through and, you know, make myself seen and, you know, talk to the administrators and and talk to, you know, the kids and see how their day is going, see what's going on, see things that they want to see change. You know, you know, maybe, you know, play a little recess with them, you know, just make them feel that they're important and that they're being heard, you know, and talk to our teachers, whether it be holding assembly or hold some kind of meeting to figure out, you know, how we can better our schools and how we can make school a better place. So, you know, Harry Butler did it, and it worked awesome. He walked through the schools, he shook hands with people, he talked to people. And and I wish we could all be Harry Butler, but I don't see why we can't pick up those practices.
Right.
So that's my plan is to walk through the schools and and talk to every person possible, shake as many hands as possible, you know, not feed them a line of crap, but be serious about it and know that you know, we're trying to do our best to change things. So that's my plan at least.
Awesome, awesome. So, all right, Andrea, this is a little tougher, more controversial subject. What is the position or I guess the moving forward with masks, vaccines? And, you know, all this health stuff that's going on, what are you guys looking to do, not do, or what's the point?
Yeah, well, I'm sticking to what I said in my campaign. So no mandates. Again, these are personal private decisions that need to be made with their parents and the kids. What I would like to do is we are looking at Douglas County and some other school areas where they are approaching the COVID protocols a little bit differently. I would honestly call it maybe like a freedom to choose. Parents had the freedom to choose of whether they would like to put their kid in a mask or not in a mask. You know, prior to COVID, we would typically get a letter when there was sometimes a breakout in class, typically like a pink eye or hand, foot, mouth, or something like that. And then parents had the choice to decide what they wanted to do. If they wanted to keep their kids home, or again, we notified the parent of of the outbreak, and then parents had the choice to do what they wanted to do. I I really feel like we need to get back to some of the common sense that we had before and and let parents decide what they want to do. This, I feel like I stated in the Washington Times. I feel like our COVID protocol has almost gotten more cumbersome than it was last year. Now, last year, I know we just had kids in masks like all the time in class. And that was very fatiguing and hugely mentally challenged for a lot of kids. And so we can't, we can't go back to that. Yet I know parents are expressing a lot of frustration over these small percentage outbreaks, and then the whole class has to be masked for like two weeks. And then if it and as we know, when when there's a sickness in class, it tends to kind of spread. And so then the challenge is going to be is the class just gonna end up being masked most of the time, and a lot of parents are just and and students are fatigued. And so I I really want to take a hard look at this and see where we're doing it in other districts where it's successful, especially in Colorado, because we have similar weather. And and just have let the parents decide what they want to do. And again, I and I would want to emphasize to students and others that we're not picking on people who choose to wear the masks and and, you know, we're not picking, you know, on those two who choose to not wear them. That is, if they feel safe and and secure with those things, then great, and without it, then great as well. So those are some of the things I'd start, I'd like to start looking at, and I do have some help right now digging into what how our protocol is set up right now and and why. And and so I really want to dig into that because I know from the student standpoint, and we need to listen to our students too, they're because they're the ones that are having to do it. And I'm hearing from a lot of them that they're they're very fatigued and they're very frustrated. I think one mom messaged us that when we won, they're like, oh, does that mean no more masks? You know, and that was what the student had had asked the mom. And so obviously, we we want to work towards a good solution, and and I do think we need to just try to make it a lot easier than it is right now.
Yeah. So I have a thought for both of you guys to consider, just looking into. I do you know if our school district has looked into ventilation? For COVID?
So it's funny that you ask that, because Juniper Ridge, when I was actually still on the board, one of the plans with obviously the Esther funds that were coming in was to to put on these ventilation filtration type systems onto the HVAC that actually like take out a crazy amount of the virus in the air. And and that honestly, right there could be a pretty easy fix. One, it would make the air better anyways, because I know we always have a cold and flu season this time of year as well. And then usually sometimes in the spring as our weather's changing. And so I I see that going forward as something that is a no brainer.
Got it. Yeah, I know, like Boulder County has a whole ventilation program that they did. And I was like, man, you know, that could be more of like a middle ground. And if you look at the schools like go to the dashboard, there's like nine hundred kids that are sick, you know, and that's all kinds of different things. It like eighty eighty-five percent of it is just like cold and there's all kinds of different sicknesses going on. And I think like respiratory wise, you know, if we can clear up the air a little bit like like that would help a little bit, so. With all of those. So. All right. Will. How can parents help? To make District Fifty-One into an incredible district, you know, how can parents be involved?
Actually, just what you said, it just get involved. I mean, get involved in our meetings, ask questions. If you if you have a comment that needs to be made, make it to us. I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna know all the answers right away. And some of the best doctors and, you know, we talked about are your parents, you know, so and the best experts are your parents. So I mean, if there's something that that you have on your mind or something you have a question with, show up to the meetings, talk to us, send us an email. You know, we'll respond to emails. We'll take phone calls. You know, we can do, you know, whatever we need to do. But I mean, I think if you wanted to stay involved, you want to get involved and make things better. Dig into it with us.
Awesome.
Can I add a little to that, Brandon?
Sure, go for it.
Yeah, so that that video of those that dad, those dads that are going into the schools, you know, that are we're helping with.
Dads on duty.
Yes, dads on duty. Thank you. That went viral, which it sounds like there's a lot of other schools that are taking on kind of that same idea. Again, it doesn't mean it doesn't mean that a school needs to have a huge fighting or or violence problem for adults to start coming in and being a positive influence on kids. I would love to see like the dads on duty. Like that idea, like at the elementary level, we could have, you know, grandparents and other people that could come in and read with kids and hug on these kids and and be there for them. And then at the high school level, yeah, if we could have, you know, the dads show up, it's gonna be very different when Will walks through a school than it will be with me, although I can give a pretty good mean mom look. So.
I'm terrified already.
Yeah. I just think it's a matter of of our, this is, and this has been something we've talked about through our whole campaign is we we have to come together as a community. Will, Angela, and I are each only one person and ourselves and 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 sure, we're, this is how we're gonna reach out and make connections through our community to help make this positive impact. And so like Will said, it is, it's truly that there's parents need to be involved. And so again, it doesn't mean you have to go to the school for eight hours a day. But if we could just start having a better system where where we had adults in all the schools for various reasons, just to be there to support and encourage, and it it would change the atmosphere dramatically, and especially because we have a sub shortage and a teacher shortage. I think any and all of that help is it would be welcomed. And so that's, that's how I feel the parents need to to show up. We can't just, again, put leave everything on the teacher's plate and think that they can get it all done. And that's how we'll end up supporting our teachers as well.
Got it. Yeah, you brought up a question that I didn't have written down, but I'm gonna ask it. You know, at the last coffee with the school board meeting, there was a couple of teachers who they were making us everybody aware of, you know, the struggles that they're having in their schools. Their their schools are, I think they're elementary schools, and they had just like tougher situations with kids, you know, kids without one parent, or there're just a lot of issues and you know, they seem to say that they were a little bit short-staffed. They didn't have paras in that they needed. And those those specific teachers, because of being in kind of a lower performing school, they got, they get a little bit. They get more work. They have to. They have to finish more work from the the state. And, you know, kind of deal with a tougher situation. And they seem to like really care about their jobs. They seem to care a lot. But, you know, for teachers like that, you know, I guess, what would you guys look to do? How would you look to help them out? I know you just said the the watchdog dads thing. There's a whole lot of that kind of stuff too, but I guess what else did you have? Go ahead, Will, first. I'll have you go first.
Well, we definitely have to, you know, have to make our teachers feel, you know, more comfortable. And, you know, I think if we can, like I said, we can get into and dig into the budget and figure out some programs where we can maybe, you know, ease up some to get some of these teachers back. Some of the, like you said, the aides, the pars, or, you know, wherever we need, you know, to get them some help, I think it'd be better, especially for the the schools that have the tougher kids in them. You know, these kids, they, the teachers don't have time to get to know their kids. So they don't know their strengths and weaknesses, because they're trying to deal with, you know, thirty other kids. So if we can get those those class sizes down, you know, we get the teachers some help, some aides and some, you know, some some counseling sessions and things like that, things would be a lot better for them. So we problem back and how to get these aides in the classroom and get these pars, you know, after the teachers.
Andrea?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a matter of getting as much of the allocable funds that we can into the classroom. And so like Will said, it's a matter of digging into the budget to see what we can do. We do know a large amount of the budget does go to teacher salaries and salaries across the board. And so I I think this is where we need to make, this is, this kind of goes back to my comment about streamlining. I think we need to just see if there's maybe positions that can be restructured, or maybe we need to remove. And don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not gonna go in there and say we're just gonna fire a bunch of people, but there may be like just sort of maybe a redundancy, I guess I could say, of where we we don't need some certain positions. And so, again, got to get in, got to listen to these things and figure it out. But we we have to get as much money as possible to be able to get to these paras, to get to these teacher aides that could get in and help help these teachers. Because until we can start hiring more teachers, we can't get smaller class sizes. And so we've got to, you know, what I what I need to really dig into is because I'm a firm believer of there's kind of a first domino that kind of sets off the rest of the dominos that fall, right? Like, you can look at a hundred different things. But there's kind of one that is sort of the precipice of or that starts everything. And so I kind of want to see where we need to go with that, because then everything that would then fall in behind that likely would would fall into place. And so that's just where I need to do some digging and some learning to figure out what that needs to look like.
Got it. All right, I got one more of these questions and then another less serious question after that. You guys ran kind of on a platform, right? Like conservative platform. And but our community has people on all sides of political spectrum and parents, you know, that yeah, how how can you guys work to bring the community together? And, you know, how are you gonna represent all of the kids and all the parents? No matter what side of the aisle they're on.
Well, that's that's the best part about having a board is, I mean, we're not always gonna do agree on the on the on the common things. Or but, you know, there's ways that we need to work together. I mean, we just need to talk and and figure out, you know, all the strategies. I mean, sometimes the conservative way might not be the best way. Somebody else's tragedy might, you know, but we need to figure it out and sit down and talk about it and and look at all aspects of it. And and it's the same with parents. Mom doesn't always agree with dad, dad didn't always agree with mom, but they always work it out. So and that's the way I look at it with us is that, you know, we you are trusting us with your kids' education. So we need to sit down and figure out how to do it and and talk together and work together and look up all aspects, you know, like, because, like I said, their aspect may be better than ours. But we just need to figure it out and, you know, act like adults and read it together and then do it together.
Yeah, I I would agree. I'm not looking to just surround myself with a bunch of people who agree with me. I honestly feel like that's the problem we've had, is that there's only been kind of one particular mindset and and that's been really frustrating. And so the so I don't want to just be the the opposite of what we've had. I I really do want to go in there and make sure that we, this is the betterment for the entire community. And so I want to listen to other people's ideas and their thoughts and, yeah, and have some dialogue. Even Will and Angela and I, we don't, we don't all agree on everything. I mean, I think on some of the bigger things that have concerned parents, we certainly do. But I think, you know, we're we're still gonna have dialogue and maybe a little discourse. And so, again, this is where all parents need to show up. This is why I was pretty upset that night when they limited the comments to forty-five minutes, even though the majority of the parents in the room were ones who were probably not wanting to put their kids in masks. There was still a good handful of parents in the room that were wanting their kids in masks. And when they shut down public comment, they shut down everybody. And I was upset about that, because there was a handful of people who had put in green slips to be able to talk. And and so that we cannot do that, because then when they did that, obviously, because there was more from one side, there was obviously just purely by numbers, you know, they had more opportunities to speak. And then they shut it all down. And then it made it look like there was nobody from the a different viewpoint that had any time to chat. Well, that wasn't the case at all. I mean, it was literally the board's fault that there wasn't a dialogue between both sides. And so I don't, I don't want to do that. I won't do that. Honestly, I want to open up public comment again for three minutes each and not limit it to sixty minutes. I mean, if we are, if we are listening to parents, then there won't be, in a sense, maybe a backlog of people that want to come and comment for one night. And again, I sit on the planning commission, and I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we had an hour, hour and a half of public comment. You know, so and those are on zoning issues. This is about our kids.
Right.
I mean, I'm not saying zoning issues are important. They are important to those neighbors, but we got to listen to the parents. I mean, especially as an elected official. I mean, these are our constituents who are coming and talking to us and telling us their concerns. And so we, like I said, we've got to listen to everybody, and I'm committed to doing that.
So I'm just gonna tell you guys as a parent, from my perspective, why that, you know, when that meeting happened, why I was so frustrated. It was the timing of what happened. Okay, like, we they, the board or however, the district had sent out their recommendations. This is what we're gonna do for the year. They were, they said no masks, right? Whatever. That's what they said like three or four weeks beforehand. So a lot of parents planned, cool, I'm gonna put my kid in school, you know, like the ones that didn't want the masks. And then literally like they're having emergency meetings about what's going on at the last possible second, right, like after parents have already made their plans for the year. Now, whatever the controversial issue is, whichever way it's gonna land, parents on both sides and community members should have time. I mean, that should have started because it was such a big deal. It should have started in like May. Like, we would have, we should have been debating and working through this stuff and having a voice from both sides, you know, all the way through and then have a decision way ahead of time so that parents are informed and they're ready and they can just decide what they're gonna do. Like, man, it didn't work out the way I wanted. Okay, now I have to do what I gotta do, you know. But last second, we're just gonna change everything like. I don't care what issue it is, like timing wise, please don't do that. Please give us time to work through the issues and come to something way ahead of time, not right as it's about to happen. So that's that's my ask.
No, and and you're right, because I think parents really felt like the rug was pulled out from underneath their feet. And and parents have to plan, right? I mean, they're, they, again, they know their kids best. And and I know my high school daughter was, she goes, Mom, if I have to go back to school in a mask, I mean, she was like in tears. It it caused some breathing issues. Her skin was breaking out. Like, she was just really, really upset. And I could tell mentally it was taking a pretty big toll on her. And so that's where, as a parent myself, I I needed to understand, like, how can I best serve my child then? You know, because I I don't want her to be so consumed with the mask that she's not learning. And and so, and again, I I've heard from a lot of other parents where their kids wore the mask, and it was no problem. They were totally fine. But again, this is where I think what parents were trying to communicate to the board was we need better communication from you, and we needed a lot sooner, because I understand, Brandon, I was at the the workshop meeting prior to that, where they were trying to get the update on the COVID protocol and and that's where parents were very frustrated, because this is literally days before school was supposed to start. And a lot of parents were asking, when are you gonna listen to us? When are you gonna get our feedback about how we feel with what's gonna move forward? And when can we ask questions? And so and I know questions can't be asked at the business meeting. And so the board really, like you said, probably in May or June, should have started either with board coffees or some of these work groups where parents could have gotten a lot Either with board coffees or some of these work groups, where parents could have gotten a lot more of their questions answered, and then it would not have become. An explosive uh, meeting, a- and even at those meetings, I feel like um, some of the leadership on the board could have diffused. Uh, that very easily. You just, you have to know who your audience is and know how to talk to them. With respect.
Um. Alright, we're finishing up, running out of time. Okay. What, Andrea, what's your favorite Audrey Hepburn movie?
Oh, my gosh!
You only have like thirty seconds to answer this, so.
Okay, uh, Breakfast activities.
Okay, sorry, had to go there.
Pearls, I gotta clutch my pearls.
Will. What is your Super Bowl prediction this year?
Oh, jeez, um, I'm thinking it's gonna be the Rams and it could be.
The Rams and the Bills?
I lo- I love my Raiders, but I don't think, I think it's me Rams.
Rams and Bills.
Nice, not Tampa?
Tampa's good. They still got Brady, so.
I know.
Alright, we're, we're finishing up, time's about to run out, thank you guys for coming, and uh, sorry, we kind of had a little crazy planning session, but. Uh, we made it work, and uh, let's keep praying for Angela, and uh, we'll talk to you guys sometime in the next few weeks before you're sworn in.
Yeah, if you want to do this again before the thirtieth, um, I know Angela probably would like to participate and it'd be fun to answer some more questions.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
Yep, definitely.
Alright, bye.
Bye.